Would the Council please come to order? This could be a meeting of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles on Friday, May 26th in the year 2000. Councilman Rudy Savornich Jr., Assistant Council President Pro Tim, serving as Presiding Officer due to the excused absences of Council President Ferraro and Council President Pro Tim Galanter. We are waiting for a quorum, but in the meantime, we do have some presentations by Council members. So at this time, the Chair would like to recognize Councilwoman Miss Sikowski for a presentation, followed by Councilwoman Goldberg for two presentations. Councilwoman Miss Sikowski?
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I am very pleased today to have standing next to me Captain Anne E. Young. And she's within the Los Angeles Police Department. She was recently promoted to the rank of Captain, becoming the first African-American woman in the department's 131-year history to attain that rank. She is an unassuming person and didn't ask for this honor, but when I learned about it and learned that she's actually assigned to a division in my district in Van Nuys, head of the Van Nuys Support Division, I did want to bring her down here and introduce her to you. And as I am reading and learned more of her history, it really is amazing. She joined the Los Angeles Police Department in 1981 and was promoted to Detective in 1988. Her assignments have included the 77th Area Juvenile Division's Abused Children Child Unit, Robbery Homicides Division's Rape Special Section, and the Internal Affairs Division. When she was promoted to Sergeant, she was given field assignments in the Central Area and South Traffic Division, and then made it on to Lieutenant in the Hollywood Pacific and Transit Group, and then Lieutenant Two at the Van Nuys Support Division, where when she was recently promoted to Captain, she will now assume command of that whole unit. Along the line, as she was working and pursuing her advancements within the department, she was also pursuing educational excellence. She got a Bachelor's Degree, a Bachelor of Science degree in Kinesiology from UCLA. She's got a teaching credential from the University of California Irvine, a Master's Degree in Education from the University of Nevada Las Vegas. And that wasn't enough, so she went on and graduated in 1998, in preparation for Captaincy, went to and graduated from the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy for Law Enforcement. So she is an incredible woman who not only has served the department well, served her community well, served herself well in terms of getting that education. And we, members of the public, we, the members of the City of Los Angeles who benefit from this background, this experience, this incredible pursuit of excellence that we have embodied here today, it gives me great pleasure to both congratulate her on her advancement to the rank of Captain, thank her for her continued service and commitment to LAPD and the citizens of Los Angeles, and introduce to you, members of the Council, Captain Anne Young.
I would just like to say thank you very much for this honor. This is something I definitely didn't ask for, but it's very nice, and I would like to thank the Council for this moment. And I would like to thank a couple of my coworkers that took time away from their busy schedules today to come and support me. It really means a lot, Detective Roberta Moore and Detective Al Aldez, who's sitting in the first row. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miss Sikowski, and congratulations, Captain. The Chair would now like to recognize Councilwoman Goldberg for presentations.
It's Friday, so it must be Quality and Productivity Commission time. And we have two more groups to introduce to all of you and to the public who have done enormous work in supporting the efforts of making government provide quality and high productivity. And so the first one I'd like to ask to come up is V O T E R, or the Voter Outreach Team Effort Recruiting, from the Office of the City Clerk Election Division. Now, this group, to promote voter participation, you know, you have to have polling places in the, supporting the different cultures and languages in our great city. And the City Clerk noted that polling locations were canceling near or on Election Day, reducing the ability of residents to participate in voting process. The team developed a program called Adopt a Poll, contacting over 800 community-based organizations and recruiting high school students as multilingual polling place workers. The result has been increased support of local polling locations, stronger volunteer and community involvement, and, by the way, a savings of about a quarter of a million dollars. Can we see the video, please?
Weave the People. It is the essence of the Constitution of the United States of America. Within the fabric of this document is our right to vote and to contribute to decisions that affect our country. Voting requires action, and at the heart are people who are responsible for making the arrangements, setting up and operating the voting booths, and overseeing the entire election process. On the local level, this responsibility falls on the Election Division of the City Clerk's Office. And to make voting work in our diverse city, the Election Division had to overcome language and cultural barriers in providing education and access to voting locations. The team was challenged to identify and recruit multilingual polling place workers to ensure that polling places would not close prematurely on or near the city's Election Day. In response, the Election Division team launched an outreach program, contacting over 800 community-based organizations and implementing the Adopt a Poll program to ensure success of individual polling locations. Nearly 100 students were recruited from local high schools as student poll workers, and 248 polling places were staffed with bilingual workers, supporting seven of the most popular languages spoken in the city. Additionally, the team involved the media, local businesses, and governmental agencies in this process, while producing and airing public service announcements on both cable and commercial television stations, and distributing literature emphasizing voter registration and participation as volunteer poll workers. The end result was a greatly increased support of local polling locations, strong student and volunteer involvement, increased public awareness of the need to vote, and a savings to the city in labor and advertisement of over $225,000. Congratulations to the Election Division of the City Clerk for this innovative and community-centered program.
And I'm sure the one thing that we cannot document, but I believe must have happened, is that a lot more people probably felt comfortable voting and feel more connected to our electoral system. So now to introduce the team that made all this possible, I'd like to introduce our City Clerk, Mike Carey.
We have four members of the project team, and let me first announce that these are temporary people that we employ, and we have excellent city employees managing the division, but we also get some very, very excellent temporary help during the election process to literally try to recruit something in the neighborhood of 9,600 people to staff 2,300 different locations, which is not a small undertaking on Election Day. The project leader was Sandy Kazanov, Joanne Boyd, Sharon Ishabashi, and Camilo Cruz, who now works for Councilman Furrow.
I wondered what was going on over there. I mean, we expect enthusiasm for these presentations, but this is more than we usually expect.
And again, these people are very creative. They've come to me with a number of ideas, some on the little bizarre side, but it's all in an effort to get people to the polls, and once they get there, to ensure that they can vote what they want to vote and pick the candidates and vote on the measures. We will continue this program. We're going to expand it. We still have significant language issues out in our community, and we need to continue to increase our involvement in the minority languages in our election process. So I may be coming, this is kind of a budget plug, we may be coming back to you early in the new fiscal year to suggest some changes and new processes, but thanks again for this special recognition to these very, very excellent people.
Thank you, Mike, and all the wonderful people who put forward this great idea. And the second group that we are honoring in terms of quality and productivity is a group from the Department of Water and Power, Water Resource Business Unit.
E. Young. And she's within the Los Angeles Police Department. She was recently promoted to the rank of captain, becoming the first African-American woman in the department's 131-year history to attain that rank. She is an unassuming person and didn't ask for this honor, but when I learned about it and learned that she's actually assigned to a division in my district in Van Nuys, head of the Van Nuys Support Division, I did want to bring her down here and introduce her to you. And as I am reading and learned more of her history, it really is amazing. She joined the Los Angeles Police Department in 1981 and was promoted to detective in 1988. Her assignments have included the Seventy-seventh Area Juvenile Divisions, Abused Children Child Unit, Robbery and Homicides Division's Rape Special Section, and the Internal Affairs Division. When she was promoted to sergeant, she was given field assignments in the Central Area and South Traffic Division, and then made it on to lieutenant in the Hollywood Pacific and Transit Group, and then lieutenant two at the Van Nuys Support Division, where when she was recently promoted to captain, she will now assume command of that whole unit. Along the line, as she was working and pursuing her advancements within the department, she was also pursuing educational excellence. She got a bachelor's degree, a bachelor of science degree in kinesiology from UCLA. She's got a teaching credential from the University of California-Irvine, a master's degree in education from the University of Nevada-Las Vegas. And that wasn't enough, so she went on and graduated in 1998, in preparation for captaincy, went to and graduated from the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy for Law Enforcement. So she is an incredible woman who not only has served the department well, served her community well, served herself well in terms of getting that education. And we, members of the public, we, the members of the city of Los Angeles who benefit from this background, this experience, this incredible pursuit of excellence that we have embodied here today, it gives me great pleasure to both congratulate her on her advancement to the rank of captain, thank her for her continued service and commitment to LAPD and the citizens of Los Angeles, and introduce to you, members of the council, Captain Anne Young.
I would just like to say thank you very much for this honor. This is something I definitely didn't ask for, but it's very nice, and I would like to thank the council for this moment. And I would like to thank a couple of my coworkers that took time away from their busy schedules today to come and support me. It really means a lot, Detective Roberta Moore and Detective Al Aldez, who's sitting in the first row. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Misakowski, and congratulations, Captain. The chair would now like to recognize Councilwoman Goldberg and Chick for presentations.
It's Friday, so it must be Quality and Productivity Commission time. And we have two more groups to introduce to all of you and to the public who have done enormous work in supporting the efforts of making government provide quality and high productivity. And so the first one I'd like to ask to come up is V O T E R, or the Voter Outreach Team Effort Recruiting, from the office of the City Clerk Election Division. Now, this group, to promote voter participation, you know, you have to have polling places in the, supporting the different cultures and languages in our great city. And the city clerk noted that polling locations were canceling near or on election day, reducing the ability of residents to participate in voting process. The team developed a program called Adopt a Poll, contacting over 800 community-based organizations and recruiting high school students as multilingual polling place workers. The result has been an increased support of local polling locations, stronger volunteer and community involvement, and, by the way, a savings of about a quarter of a million dollars. Can we see the video, please?
Weave the People. It is the essence of the Constitution of the United States of America. Within the fabric of this document is our right to vote and to contribute to decisions that affect our country. Voting requires action, and at the heart are people who are responsible for making the arrangements, setting up and operating the voting booths, and overseeing the entire election process. On the local level, this responsibility falls on the Election Division of the City Clerk's office. And to make voting work in our diverse city, the Election Division had to overcome language and cultural barriers in providing education and access to voting locations. The team was challenged to identify and recruit multilingual polling place workers to ensure that polling places would not close prematurely on or near the city's election day. In response, the Election Division team launched an outreach program, contacting over 800 community-based organizations, and implementing the Adopt a Poll program to ensure success of individual polling locations. Nearly 100 students were recruited from local high schools as student poll workers, and 248 polling places were staffed with bilingual workers, supporting seven of the most popular languages spoken in the city. Additionally, the team involved the media, local businesses, and governmental agencies in this process, while producing and airing public service announcements on both cable and commercial television stations, and distributing literature emphasizing voter registration and participation as volunteer poll workers. The end result was a greatly increased support of local polling locations, strong student and volunteer involvement, increased public awareness of the need to vote, and a savings to the city in labor and advertisement of over $225,000. Congratulations to the Election Division of the City Clerk for this innovative and community-centered program.
And I'm sure the one thing that we cannot document, but I believe must have happened, is that a lot more people probably felt comfortable voting and feel more connected to our electoral system. So now, to introduce the team that made all this possible, I'd like to introduce our city clerk, Mike Carey.
We have four members of the project team, and let me first announce that these are temporary people that we employ, and we have excellent city employees managing the division, but we also get some very, very excellent temporary help during the election process to literally try to recruit something in the neighborhood of 9,600 people to staff 2,300 different locations, which is not a small undertaking on election day. The project leader was Sandy Kazanov, Joanne Boyd, Sharon Ishabashi, and Camilo Cruz, who now works for Councilman Fuhrer.
I wondered what was going on over there. I mean, we expect enthusiasm for these presentations, but this is more than we usually expect.
And again, these people are very creative. They've come to me with a number of ideas, some on the little bizarre side, but it's all in an effort to get people to the polls, and once they get there, to ensure that they can vote what they want to vote and pick the candidates and vote on the measures. We will continue this program. We're going to expand it. We still have significant language issues out in our community, and we need to continue to increase our involvement in the minority languages in our election process. So I may be coming, this is kind of a budget plug. We may be coming back to you early in the new fiscal year to suggest some changes and new processes. But thanks again for this special recognition to these very, very excellent people.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, and all the wonderful people who put forward this great idea. And the second group that we are honoring in terms of quality and productivity is a group from the Department of Water and Power, Water Resource Business Unit, if they would come up and join us. And I think it's Mark Gentili is going to be the spokesperson today after we see the video. This is called the High Efficiency Washing Machine Rebate Program. And one would maybe wonder, well, why are we talking about washing machines in city government in LA? But this is all about an effort to reduce the cost and demand for water. D W P worked with the vendors in several agencies and ended up encouraging a great number of residents to utilize new high-efficiency washing machines, resulting in reduced utilization of not only water, but electricity and soap. This team implemented the program in only three months. With over 6,300 washing machines installed, they saved over 100 millions of gallons of water and $600,000 annually in reduced water, sewage, and energy usage. Let's see the video, and we'll learn.
Los Angeles is known for its excellent weather for outdoor activities and is a choice location for annual vacations and raising families. With a low level of annual rainfall, water consumption regularly exceeds the local supply, and the Department of Water and Power imports water to meet the needs of the region. In an effort to reduce the cost and demand for water, water conservation has become a way of life for Southern California. Conservation takes many forms, including a reduction in the watering of lawns, installing low-flow water faucets and low-flush toilets, and by taking shorter showers. However, the city is always looking at other ways to encourage residents to reduce the amount of water they use. So when the Department of Water and Power recognized an opportunity to reduce water usage while washing clothes, they quickly implemented the High Efficiency Washing Machine Rebate Program. The D W P team partnered with several agencies that would benefit from the launch of this rebate program, including the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, the Southern California Gas Company, the State of California, and the City of Los Angeles Bureau of Sanitation. The team also reached out to the product manufacturers, soliciting their help in the rebate program, and advised them on product displays, advertisements, and the education of their sales organizations. The D W P implemented this program in just three months, and more than 6,300 of these new washing machines have been installed to date. These machines are collectively saving their owners over $600,000 annually in water, sewer, and energy savings, while reducing water utilization by over 100 million gallons, allowing the D W P to acquire water from less expensive sources. Besides saving water, residents with these machines are also enjoying reduced soap and energy usage, clothes that last longer due to less agitation, and a strong relationship with a very dedicated D W P team. Congratulations to the D W P Water Resource Business Unit for this collaborative and successful water-conserving effort.
Thank you, colleagues. I want to turn the mic over to Mark Gentili to tell us a little bit more. And as we were watching the video, my colleague, Councilman Fuhrer, commented that there's word that the large manufacturers of washing machines across the country are getting smart and now switching to this new technology. So, Mark.
Good morning, honorable counsel. Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Mark Gentili. I'm part of the High Efficiency Washer Program team. And the first thing I'd like to do is introduce the team. Richard Harrisick, Paul Hanley, and Dave Olmstead. And on the team's behalf, I want to thank you for recognizing us and let you know that this program is still running. Anybody needs a new washer, there's a $150 rebate for buying the high-efficiency type. And with the high-efficiency washer, not only do you save water, but also you save on soap. From what I've heard, it's easier on the clothes, and the savings of water per wash is about 15 gallons.
Wow.
And I forgot one person on the team, Tom Gaxdeter couldn't make it here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very much. So let's go back and take.
Thank you, councilwomen. Colleagues, we will have a quorum in just a few moments. So if you could all just wait one moment, we do have the one council member who is due to arrive en route, so if you could just hold on for one moment. How many items do we have? You know. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Burnson, Chick, Fuhrer, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Subornius, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten councilmembers present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we have announced, this is a meeting of the City Council for Friday, May 26th. There are 15 council districts in the city. We are currently being broadcast live on L.A. City View, Channel 35. The meeting will be repeated this evening beginning at 7:30, and on Sunday, all three council meetings of the week will begin on Sunday beginning at 10 o'clock. First order of business, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Wax moves. Mr. Pacheco seconds. Without objection, they are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, they are approved.
The items to be continued from today's meeting, Mr. President, the first of which, item number two, there's been requests from Council District Seven to continue that to Tuesday and not present the ordinance, the entire matter being continued to the 30th of May.
Without objection, so ordered.
Item nine, Councilman Fuhrer would like that continued to Tuesday, May 30th.
Without objection.
And you have 10, or more than 10.
Without objection, so ordered.
And item 28, he'd also like that continued to July 14th. Item 28.
Okay.
It's a Rule 16 motion.
Okay, without objection, so ordered on item number 28.
All right. The balance of today's agenda, of which public hearings have been held, you have items one through 10, with the exceptions of two, nine, I guess that's it.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard on those items? Seeing none, are there any council colleagues that would like to be heard on those items? What items were they again, Madam Clerk?
One through 10.
One through 10.
With the exceptions of the two that were continued.
I do have a speaker's card on number eight, which was the year-end budget adjustment, so won't we call item number eight special? Okay? Seeing no one that wishes to speak on these items, including council colleagues, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved.
And the ordinance will go over on item number one to June the 2nd.
Okay, so ordered. Next items. Fourth with on four, five, and six. Any other fourth withs? Okay. Next items.
Items for which public hearings have not been held are 11 through 27. 27, there should be a motion made to amend that, to include the correct fund number. I've been advised that the language to be added in there changed on the deposit instructions of controllers to deposit the 1% arts fee into the Arts Development Fee Trust Fund Number 516, and as much as that is proprietary department.
Okay. We do have items number 11 through 27 before us. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any of those items? I have no cards. Seeing none, the public comment period on those items is closed. Are there any specials, items 11 through 27? 15 is called special.
17 and 18, please.
17 and 18 called special. Any other specials?
I'm going to continue. Day, each to each meeting on item 15, I have a conversation with the author of the bill, and then you talk to him about some new considerations. So, Mr. President, members, I'd like to continue item 15.
Until what day, Mr. Fuhrer? Mr. Holden?
A week. So we'd like to continue item number 15 until the 2nd of June? Okay, is there any objection to continuing item number 15 until the 2nd of June? Okay, without objection, so ordered for June 2nd on item number 15. Are there any other specials of items 11 through 27? We need a motion on number 27. We'll have Mr. Fuhrer move and Mr. Wax second on item number 27. Okay? Any council colleagues like to speak on any of those items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on items 11 through 27, except for item 15, which is being continued, 17 and 18, which have been called special? And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Any fourth withs?
And the ordinances are over to June the 2nd of that group.
Okay. Ordinances on those items go over to June 2nd. Any fourth withs? Okay, let us go back to the items called special. I believe we have a card on item number eight, Madam Clerk.
President, you haven't taken up the continued agendas yet. I have item 29 before you now.
There it is. Okay. Item number 29.
Mr. President? I'm waiting for, if you could just hold it on the desk.
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay. Next items, Madam Clerk.
The closed sessions, 30 and 31, and then you have a card on item eight.
Okay, we'll hold item 30 and 31 on the desk, and let us go back to item number eight, which is the year-end budget adjustments. We have a speaker, Stephen J. Gallegos. Mr. Gallegos, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity. On item number eight, specifically 2B, it mentions a transfer from the following sources of the unappropriated balance. That particular item, number 2B, is $800,000 from the unappropriated tobacco settlement funds that are in the general fund. That $800,000, though might seem not so much as far as part of the Reserve for the Economic Uncertainties Fund, which is being set up, that $800,000 could go for some very significant needs that will help the citizens of the city of Los Angeles, particularly the item number 10, which shows the money going to the city's anti-smoking unit. We appreciate the council's commitment to fund the anti-smoking unit out of the general fund before the tobacco settlement money arrived, but now that it's here, may we suggest that it be used for the additional funding needs of the anti-smoking unit. Specifically, the two officers, which are part of that anti-funding unit, which go out to the bars and restaurants to follow up on the reports that they've received, only can pull from the car pool that's available to them. So if there are no cars available, they can't go out and do their job. We're hoping that the money and the requests that they've had for this year can be used from this $800,000 from the tobacco settlement money. What greater use can there be for this tobacco settlement money than to use it for the anti-smoking or tobacco programs that we've got? I also saw in the budget that there was $102,000 pulled from money to be used for playgrounds. Why not use this money for the playgrounds, for the kids? What great opportunity to put up a plaque in a playground that says, "This has been funded from the tobacco settlement money coming to the city of Los Angeles." There are so many good uses that this money could be used for. And sure, it all goes into the general fund, and maybe it comes from the same pot, but when you think about proprietary use of a fund which came to the city for a different reason, it would be comparing my dog or cat to every single dog and cat in the city. It's not the same. So with the council's wisdom, we ask that the money from the tobacco settlement that's being earmarked for the Reserve for Economic Uncertainties be used for the fire department's anti-smoking unit, and therefore free up some of that money that would normally go to that particular unit for whatever needs the city might have. And ladies and gentlemen of the council, I know that the decisions that you make are not easy. And so because of the job that you do, and the burdens that you do carry, and the responsibility that you have, it's kind of, you've kind of inspired me, myself, to perhaps seek the council district seat in my district when it becomes available. So I want to thank you very much for this time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any council colleagues that would like to speak on item number eight? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item eight and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved, fourth with. Next items.
17 special, Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg, item number 17 special.
Yes, I'd just like to get some staff to explain the difference between what is now and what this would change, and why we're opposing this. And particularly, I understand the argument about the collective bargaining and home rule issues, so I'm less interested in those because I understand those. I'm much more interested in knowing what currently are the benefits that the employees that would be affected by this legislation now enjoy in Los Angeles, and what would this change?
Mary, you want to go into that? Mary Higgins from the C A O's office. In 1994, we negotiated some changes to the workers' comp benefits for all of our, most of our bargaining units, with the exception of one, I believe. Currently, for the units that are involved with this legislation, there is a two-tier system. If there's a sudden severe traumatic injury, the employee receives take-home pay, basically minus the pension contribution.
Right.
If it's a non-sudden severe traumatic injury, they receive take-home pay minus the pension contribution and minus the other taxes that would have been taken out.
Right.
So it's basically what goes home in the paycheck.
Your normal net income.
Correct. And this is the same setup that we have for the police officers.
So they're all being treated the same now?
Correct.
Okay. So now, this legislation would change what?
This would bring it back to 100% of pay, basically.
Oh, I see. So it would be more than what they currently take home.
Correct.
And it would be different than what other bargaining units similarly situated are receiving.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item number 17? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on item number 17? Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved, fourth with. Next item.
Item 18 special, Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg.
I'd like to hear what the library department's view is on this before we take a vote on it as well. And then I have, hold my time because I'd like to make a few remarks after it's over.
Thank you. My name is Chris Marita, Business Manager of the Library Department. I have here with me the Chief of Library Security, Ernest Love, to my immediate right, and Frank Martinez, Sergeant. And since, for the last seven years, the Board of Library Commissioners has supported limited peace officer authority for the department, for the officers, and the state, we had also commissioned a study by the State Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, and they also recommended they also recommended limited peace officer authority. And the full city council has supported a similar measure in 1997. And what this amended measure is before the state legislature is to provide our officers, basically, three things: the power to arrest, the power to serve warrants, and the ability to receive criminal history information. And we would be willing to enter into an MOU with LAPD like DOT did last year, and to be able to limit the scope of things that we can do. So, the department has been very supportive of it, and we hope the city council will continue to support the security, as they have recently, in adding five new officers to the department.
Are you therefore then supportive of this legislation?
Yes, we're supportive.
So, you don't wish us to oppose it?
Correct.
All right. So, then, now I need to know why we have the recommendation to oppose it. Okay. All right. Then I'll wait and hear that before I, well, just.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Holden, Chair of the Committee.
Mr. President, members, and Ms. Goldberg, the Police Department was in opposition, but before the Police Department decided they were opposing it, I asked a lot of questions of the Library Department, and also of the security officers who were there present. And we have a limited number of security officers. I think it'd be misuse of their, of their time to have to go down to a police station, take two of them to arrest, to fill out reports, and take them away from the site that they're supposed to be providing security and protection for. We're going to see a lot of effort on the part of some security officers to become police officers. If they choose to become police officers, they should go out and take the exam and join the Police Department. I don't, I did not see that it was a good idea for them to put that much effort and time away from providing security at the library. What one did say, for an example, "Well, if I get an irate person, I gotta hold him." I said, "Do you have handcuffs?" "Yeah." "Can you put him in handcuffs?" "Yes." "You can restrain him?" "Yes." "You have the nightstick," or whatever they call that stick they use? I said, "Can you, if they become aggressive, you can use it?" "Yes." "Then what is it that you need to do?" "What we need to arrest." You know what arrest mean? Arrest mean leave your post unprotected, go down to the police station, spend four or five hours down there filling out a report like a police officer, and then going to testify in court, as they may have to do now sometime, but in a limited way. And it just, it just doesn't make any sense. If you want to make security officers police officers, then that's what you need to do, but not misuse their time in this manner. Now, it's like etching away, "Let me get a little bit today, and a little bit more tomorrow, and pretty soon, I'm gonna be men and women in blue." We want to have police officers there, LAPD officers, then put LAPD officers in the library. Now, they cut a deal with the Library Department, that's fine, but not with me, because I don't think it's, I think it's a misuse. And you know what happened in the Senate? Mr. Alacant had to put the bill on call. You know what that means by putting a bill on call? It means that he almost didn't have the votes. He had to go around and do a little talking about, "I'll help you," and then, "Don't you remember me?" He still only came up with 22 votes. 21 that takes the pass is gonna die, it's gonna die, and ain't gonna go anywhere. We're gonna amend it in this, bring it back for concurrence in the Assembly amendments, and kill it on the Senate floor, because that's where it belongs, dead. They need to do their job as they're doing it right now, not misuse their time. They got handcuffs, they got this billy club, and they can use it, and they have used it. Is the Police Department here? Are you guys coming forward to say what your position is on this bill, yes or no? Will you hold my time, if I have any left? And say why, why you take the position that you're taking? They held my time a minute ago, Mr. Chair. They say front and center. Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Commander Mark Lee for the Police Department. The Police Department is opposition to this bill for basically two reasons, first being that this is just another proliferation of police officer powers outside of the Police Department in different departments in the city government. The second reason is, is that the Police Department really doesn't see a need for police officer powers on the library security staff. They have the ability now to effect arrest. They can do so under the, the powers vested to any private citizen in the penal code. So, we see that as an unnecessary elevation of their status to peace officers. They, they really have the ability to make those arrests now.
Do they have to go down to the station, fill out reports, or do you take reports at the scene?
No, they wouldn't. They would just call LAPD after they.
All right. Now, what happens if you, if you give them the power that they want? Didn't they have to go down and secure that arrest by going to the police station?
Yes, they would.
That's what I'm talking about. You know, this bill's gonna die, and we should oppose it and help it die quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Missakowski.
Thank you. I'm sorry, from the Police Department, your position is in opposition to elevating the security guards to peace officer status? Did I say that? Okay, that is correct. Okay. Members of the council, this is an issue that we seem to be coming up upon time and again, whether it's park rangers, and whether or not they should be armed. We have security in general services, and they are now armed. And it seems to me, once we open the door to elevating security officers to peace officers, however limited with the best intent right now, it's something that a few years from now, we may say, "Well, they don't have enough authority, let's broaden it," and we create this two-tier, three-tier, multi-tier, peace officers, some with armed, some not armed, and our police officers. And I, I think we create some real problems for ourselves as, as a city in terms of having uniformity. And as much as I am sympathetic and believe that the library security, library guards, library security guards need some additional support, it seems to me that now having some of those items available, like the handcuffs, like pepper spray, that I'm not sure that peace officer status is going to give them what they seek, and it's gonna be more a detriment, I think. So, I, at this point, and I'm also concerned that this particular bill in the state senate is one like we see before, which is affecting only the library security guards in the city of Los Angeles, not throughout the state. And if it's good enough to be considered, it's good enough, I think, to be considered uniformly. So, I, at this point, I think Mr. Holden has, has the right focus. I'd be very happy to say have the Police Department and the library work together, as they are trying to work together with Recreation and Parks and the Police Department, to find out what, if anything, in a limited status, there can be some mutual support and mutual agreement on. But it seems to me that having our two departments at variance is, is not a healthy position for us to be in, in moving forward with the bill to support it. So, at this point, I think the recommendation to oppose the bill is the correct one.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
I think we have a problem, though, because we have a city department, the Library Department saying it wants one thing, and we have a Police Department, another city department, saying it wants something different. The difficulty I have is, is that we do not have a Police Department that is able to respond to all of the situations at the library, and that's just the truth. It has, it has too much to do. It has too much on its plate. It's not high enough, I imagine, on the list unless it were something very violent and very scary that, for them to get to. And so, what we end up doing is leaving librarians, messenger clerks, and patrons, who are mostly older people and children, with a security guard that doesn't have police officer status to help them in difficult situations. So, I, I would like to ask that we, because I think we need 15 people here to discuss this, or a closer number, I'd like to ask that we hold this on the table till Tuesday, and see if we can have a larger quorum. But also, I'd like to ask if the two departments could sit down between now and Tuesday and discuss this, because I feel it's a very difficult position for the council to be in, to pick, in essence, between two positions, both of which make sense, by two different departments in the same city. So, it would help me if we could continue this, and I would so move until Tuesday, and ask the representatives from the Police Department, the representatives from the Library Department, and Library Department Security to, to talk to each other, and see if there is something we can come to agreement on. And if not, then on Tuesday, we'll still have to figure out which one to side with. But maybe between then and now, we can get some assistance by asking the two departments to speak to one another. And that would be my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Just briefly, Mr. President, members of the council, what I wish to say is that we have, as has been communicated by a number of other members, discussed the deployment of security and police personnel at various public entities or spaces, call it the airport, call it the, reckon parks, facilities, libraries, et cetera. And I think the fundamental policy question has to be, are we willing to assign priority to public space as it relates to the deployment of police personnel, fully staffed, fully-equipped police personnel? That's the question that we have to deal with. That's what's driving a part of this discussion. And for myself, I believe we do need to do precisely that. Mr. Savonich, you will recall upon election, this is one of the first issues that you began to work on. Here it is, at the sunset, sorry to remind you of that, of that stellar journey here, that the matter remains unresolved. Somehow, we, we need to come to grips with the basic issue of how parks are going to be treated, how libraries are going to be treated, et cetera, as a part of public safety. Do they deserve special consideration or not? I happen to believe they do. Currently, they don't enjoy that status. It is a deployment question in part, but more fundamentally, it is a policy question. And my hope is that we will come to grips with it as a policy question, and instruct the respective departments to be in line with such policy. Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Well, the matter of peace officer status has been coming before this council in one level or another, as long as I've been here. But I will say this, and I, I recognize the remarks made by Mr. Holden are probably correct, but I also know that we need to deal with the realities of today, which have changed a great deal. I'm not so much concerned about the fact of their authority to arrest and so forth, but, you know, we have to think in terms of the type of lunatics we have running around today, such as happened at the Jewish Community Center in my district, where the children were shot up. And we have, we have some unusual problems today, and we need to address them. Now, I don't know if this particular piece of legislation is the way to do it, or if it even has a chance, but it's certainly something that we need to deal with as a, not just as a city, but as a, as a nation today. We have more and more violence, more and more people that have guns illegally, and are, killing means nothing to them. It's, it's something that we need to wrestle with, and I'm not sure what the correct direction is. And I'm not sure whether granting this status, you do not now have the status to make an arrest if there's a disturbance? Say somebody's in the library, and they're disrupting, what, do you have the authority to put them out, or what?
Put them out, or make a citizen's arrest, like any other.
You have to make a citi, you can, or you can make a citizen's arrest and call the police to make the arrest. Is that correct?
Yes, and keep the suspect there for an unlimited amount of time. Once we have them under control, we become a.
Well, let me ask, let me ask a question, Alan. Making a citizen's arrest, you also face the possibility of, of a lawsuit? And does that place the city in any type of jeopardy as far as a lawsuit is concerned by a, I mean, being as, you represent the city?
Yeah.
As, you may be, you may be a citizen, but you represent the city.
Yeah.
So, does the city then become involved in a potential illegal arrest? Let me ask the city attorney on that.
I, I would think that that would be a possibility, yes.
You would think what?
That that would be a possibility. That it would be under color of law.
Yeah. So, I, I'm concerned, you know, I, I do have concerns, and I'm not sure which way to go here. I'm not, I haven't even read this piece of legislation, Mr. Holden. I'll rely upon you, because you're our legislative chair, even though you don't always vote with me.
Oh.
But anyway, even though I may go along, I, I want you to know that I do sympathize, and I think we need to find some answers. It may not be in this legislation, but maybe you could get together with Ms. Missakowski and the head of Cultural, and the Cultural Affairs Committee that also covers libraries and parks, and maybe we could come up with something that'll give us some means of getting the job done, and, and not jeopardizing the city, and the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, the only question I was gonna have before Mr. Burnson spoke was to follow with Ms. Goldberg's motion of continuing, is to get us information as to exactly what we're talking about, in terms of some serious or real before-and-after comparisons. I don't know if, if what's happening in the Library Department are primarily disturbing the peace, or we're talking about people who are actually being violent and assaulting other, people who use the library. I don't know what, what you're dealing with to begin with. So, if I can look at that in terms of the types of crimes that are occurring at the library, then I can make an intelligent decision as to whether a security officer or a police officer would, would be better, or someone with the peace officer status. Because if I follow Mr. Burnson's logic of looking at protecting ourselves against every abnormal situation, such as Mr. Buford, what's his last name? I just remember his first name, because it was Buford. Furrow. If you go after, if you're looking to protect against that situation, then basically, you're looking to arm and have a police officer in every public space, because that situation was a very violent situation. But, so I can't really use that as the guiding post on all these areas that are public or open to the public, because then I'd be advocating that police officers should replace our security force, and I don't think that's the direction we want to go in, in our open spaces, because we don't want to have an era of the space being unwelcome, or sort of a military-type situation where we have our police officers fully deployed, or basically patrolling these open spaces. That's why we try to use the less threatening security officers, and in some places, even, we even have people who aren't armed. So, I would like to know, in terms of what happens at the police, excuse me, at the library, that this would make a difference in, because that would be where I would be making my decision as to what, what types of incidents. So, when we come back, and we have that type of information as to what, what's going on.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chek.
Yes, I wanted to remind my colleagues very specifically that we had some in-depth conversations about one city, one department. And, Mr. Ridley Thomas, when you were talking about policy issues, that was certainly a big one. And I remember, at one point, it seemed to take a turn and leave the council chambers as an important policy discussion, and, and maybe went across the street to the Police Commission. But it is a little bit deja vu in terms of some of the issues that we have been and are still dealing with, in terms of arming park rangers, et cetera. I'm very willing to support the, the motion to delay a few days on this, because I remember when the Department of Recreation and Parks sat down with LAPD around some of the same issues, we certainly came up with some improved protocols, although I will not claim that they were final answers. And also, I would like to point out, in terms of supporting Mr. Holden's committee's position, even when this comes back, I, I'm intending to support that, because, colleagues, I think this, these kinds of decisions must be taken. Because, colleagues, I think this, these kinds of decisions must be taken at our city level. I don't think we would want Sacramento to be stepping in and dealing with, for instance, the arming of park ranger issues simply because we can't come to a decision, or because they might not like our decision. So I think we have to grapple with this head-on. I think there's been some very good points made, and I would like to hear what the two departments come back with. But I think that we need to solve this city, local, public safety and employee issue here, rather than in Sacramento. Thank you.
All right. Chair recognizes Councilman Savornich.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I too have mixed feelings on this issue. As Mr. Ridley Thomas earlier articulated, this has been almost a seven, eight-year battle in regards to making sure that our public places of gathering are more safe. One of the issues to which I take exception also is, is that, as we have tried to do in the past to articulate this point of view, when we go and uniform a member of the city family in a peace officer uniform, and then do not provide them the adequate tools to do their job, I feel that we are doing a disservice to that individual city employee, their family, their loved ones, and the city. For example, I'm looking over here at this gentleman, who I believe has the rank of sergeant, who is a member of the city library security forces. His uniform, to me, looks like that of a Los Angeles police officer. The only difference is, for those of us who can tell the difference, is that the stripes for a sergeant are blue, where the stripes on an LAPD officer's arms are white. But for all practical purposes, he looks like a Los Angeles police officer as his uniform. Our park rangers are dressed like deputy sheriffs. Our port police officers, which do have peace officer status, are dressed like police, but they're equipped like police. And so one of the reassurances that I don't receive from the police department, and I've asked the same question of the police department, would a Los Angeles police officer do the same type of duty that some of our non-elevated peace officers do without the equipment that they have? And the answer is no. I mean, would a police officer unbuckle his, his ammunition and his gun belt, put the shotgun in the trunk, and if he was a park ranger, walk into a park unarmed? And the answer is no. Would a Los Angeles police officer unbuckle his gun belt, leave the shotgun in the trunk, and walk into a library unarmed? And the answer is no. But we require general ser, general services security officers to do that. We require our library police officers not to have the powers, if they are armed, to do that. So we put a lot of different city employees under different levels of peace officer status in harm's way to protect the public. Some of them are armed, some of them are not. I believe that the library officers are armed. They're not armed, okay? And so when confronting a suspect, all they have is possibly some mace, maybe, a baton, maybe, and their own wits. And so I continue to believe that if we put individuals who are members of the city family in harm way, even though this may be contrary to the policies that the Los Angeles Police Department would want to embrace, I'm sure the police department would not want sworn LAPD officers being put into situations where they would not be able to defend themselves or protect the public interest. I don't think we should expect that of other city employees, that we are putting in the capacity either as a peace officer or as a security officer in order not to protect the public and to protect themselves. That's all. And so today, I would like to ask that, I would agree that we continue it, even though I also respect Mr. Holden's recommendation. He must be recommending it for some reason, but I think maybe we should continue it. But I do think that at the end of the day, we are going to have to be very serious in regards to all of our non-LAPD employees, that we expect to do police or security work, that they should be able to have the same tools to do their job as we expect everyone else to do, or not have them do that job anymore, and expect LAPD to do it. End of the story.
Chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
I withdraw my motion.
There's three people that want to speak. All right, for the second time, I have Mr. Holden, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and Ms. Misakowski. Chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Mr. Savornich, there have been a lot of discussion about the Peace Department, not just in Los Angeles, but throughout the nation, cannot maintain order within our communities. And there are people who said, let's bring in the Marines, and let's bring in National Guard, and let's give them support. But then, on the other hand, they say, but we're a free nation. We don't want to be known as an armed camp, or do we have our libraries to be armed? I mean, how many library officers do we have, number one? And number two, how many have been shot in the line of duty? None. How many police officers have been shot in the line of duty? Every year, we have a memorial ceremony for them. The criminals seem to know, therefore, that when they're police officers and when they're not. And who they're at, mad at, sometimes they, when the police officer's in hot pursuit, they get very defensive, and they do their job. They don't know if they're going to come back home at night or day, and they sacrifice their life for us. Well, security guards just don't seem to have that kind of threat. Now, the question is, do you want to have libraries become armed camp? That's a policy decision. And you have to make that decision, not Nate Holden. I'm saying to you that, how many, I asked a question to the chief, how many security officers do we have at the libraries? Could you give me a quick answer?
Forty-two.
Forty, how many libraries do we have?
Sixty-eight.
All right, then you want to, you, you want an armed security officer at every library? If that's what you're talking about?
No, sir, we're not.
Well, no, no, but I'm just saying, that's the eventuality. You're going to come back and say, give us weapons. Then the next thing that's going to happen, give the crossing guards arrest power, and give them weapons. Come on, when are you going to stop this? The fact of the matter is that we had security guards at City Hall for years, since there was a City Hall, and they were never armed, and no, no one was ever shot. But times have changed, yes, and some of them are not armed. But we have police officers right here, in these chambers, every time we meet, along with the security officers. And I'm saying that if you want to make a policy change, fine, but when you, when you give them arrest power, they have to go to the station, and they have to be removed from duty, the forty-plus that you have, kind of the ones that are on vacation, the ones that are on sick leave, they're not there to do what you think they should be doing anyway. Now, I would say to you that they ought to be honest about what they're saying they really want. They want to be cops. If you want to be cops, go out and do it the right way. And it's not what they really want to do. So I'm saying to you, it's just a misuse of their time. They look like police officers, you say? I don't think so. They don't even act like police officers, because they're not going out there waving a weapon. I don't know of anybody that's been shot in our libraries. These are, there have been other incidents, and there have been problems for the city of Los Angeles. But I got to tell you, if you want to make a policy change, then let's discuss that. But unless and until we do that, Mr. Chairman, members, hey, I go along with the police department, and that's my viewpoint, even before the police department testified that they were a no, just to make any sense. And you know what? You saw the voting list of the legislature, they said no.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, just briefly, I'm pleased that Ms. Chik reminded us of the policy issue that we had already given ample consideration to. Ms. Goldberg, as a friendly amendment, I would hope that those who are seeking to negotiate and collaborate with respect to the differences that they may wish to reconcile would have that one city, one department concept before them. And as this comes back to us, Mr. President, I would hope that that issue would be in focus. If we have policy, we ought to appeal to it. If we don't, we ought to develop it. Certainly, we should not disregard it. And if Ms. Goldberg would be willing to accept that as a friendly amendment, I would be quite appreciative.
I'm not sure what the.
Well, you asked for a continuance, and then the interim that the police department and the library department get together, with the intent being to resolve the differences to the extent that they could. I'm simply suggesting, as a friendly amendment, that they have as a part of that discussion, the policy that we advance with respect to one city, one department, and that was some time ago, as was mentioned by Ms. Chik. I think we have something that can help us get to where we need to be. And it would seem to me that that would be an important thing to do. That not being accepted, I still would want to suggest that we pay attention to what we've already determined, and minimally bring that policy back to see if it's still relevant to what we need to be doing, because over and over again, over and over again, we have this discussion, and we have yet to resolve it. Now, Ms. Misakowski, maybe it's the business of public safety to look into that policy. But I think Ms. Chik is correct in terms of her reminder that we did this work before, and we ought to stop retreading and essentially make some determinations so that we can resolve this matter to the extent that we can, once and for all, not department by department. We have overarching policy that ought to guide us. Are you, gentlemen, aware of this particular one?
Not in any specifics.
Well, may I then suggest that you attempt to retrieve it and see if it is useful or not? It could very well be.
If the councilman could give us a file number, we'll be glad to talk.
All right, will happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Misakowski.
Thank you. There have been a lot of good points made, but I think the one that just was made, Mr. Ridley Thomas, confirming what Ms. Chik has talked about, there is a policy in the city of one city, one police. That was meant to be a guideline. The other thing that I'm concerned about is Mr. Savornich. Mr. Savornich, you were talking about the library security guards, and interchangeably talking about peace officers. That's what they are not, that's what this bill would seek, seeking to become peace officers with limited status, and yet we have other peace officers who have achieved that, who are seeking being armed. We have other peace officers which are armed in the city. So we have a whole variety. This is a very slippery slope, depending on each department. And I dare say that in the departments like General Services, where the peace officer slash security guards are armed, there is not a policy, is do we have a shooting policy? Do we have a direction? Do we believe that our general manager of the General Services Department should be overseeing officers carrying guns? That's the, that's the condition that exists right now today. Do we want to have the city librarian overseeing something like that? Do we want to have the city Recreation and Parks Department overseeing something like that? This is a very, very slippery slope, which is why we went back to the one city, one police. And in fact, coming to the council in the next few months will be a, an MOA between the Recreation and Parks Department and the Police Department that worked on that and attempted to develop that. That's clearly what we need here with the Police Department and the Library Department, to determine what is the right course. As we have today, it's not a clear course, because they're in dispute. I think, I don't think we're going to resolve this by Tuesday. I think the discussion has been healthy and helpful, and I believe we will begin to have that discussion again. I'd like to ask the CLA and Mr. Holden whether or not there's any urgency on this action, because I, as I say, I don't think we're going to be resolved by Tuesday. But we have at least opened the door to the dialogue that I think's got to happen, to help resolve the true issues of safety, but with an intent and understanding and a clarity from the library that what, what they can do, what they, what assistance can be provided, and what agreement and guarantee there might be from the Police Department to provide that security that's, to the ultimate police authority that's necessary when it is necessary. But as I say, right now, we are in somewhat a disarray, have different standards for varying departments, lack of clarity, not consistency, and no guidelines overruling at all. And that's what I think we need to be getting to, which one city, one police talked about.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Can, can the city legislative analyst suggest whether, if, or there's an urgency to take a city position on this?
The Alarcon bill passed the Senate last week, and now goes to the Assembly.
Yesterday.
It was yesterday?
Yeah.
The 24th. That's right. It will be in the Assembly. The legislature has two months to go, the month of June and the month of August. By the end of June, the Policy Committee in the Second House must consider all bills referred to it. So that'll be a deadline towards the end of June. Therefore, if, if the council will take a position within the next week or so, it would be appropriate.
Okay, well, obviously, there's some urgency to act, and I appreciate that. If we can have as much dialogue and discussion between the two departments for Tuesday, or maybe by the end of the week next week, at least let's, let's have it as a marker on Tuesday and see where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goldberg.
I still think this should be continued, and the only reason that I looked at you askance, Mr. Ridley Thomas, is I don't think we ever passed that as a policy. We discussed it because we were talking about airport police and harbor police, but now in the new charter, airport and harbor police are designated as separate from LAPD. So I'm just saying, I just, that's the only reason, not, it was just, I don't think we ever came to a conclusion. I do think it would be useful to come to a conclusion, but I don't think we have yet. And that is something that maybe we could ask a Public Safety Committee to take up. Regardless of what we do on Tuesday, and I really urge that we hold this till Tuesday and give them a chance to talk this over, but regardless of whether we do that or not, I would like to suggest that the issue of what happens with this unit should come to Personnel Committee, as we did with the City Hall security, and we can have a good discussion and bring back to the council our own views, whether or not state legislation intervenes in the meantime. Give both departments an opportunity to make their case in a, a very full way, with an opportunity for you to bring in other members of each department and, and to take a look at this. And also maybe have a weigh-in from General Services about what their experience has been, since we've made some changes there, and look at the personnel issues in a Personnel Committee. The question of one department, one city, I think should go to the Public Safety Committee, because that is something that is a policy decision, I think is much more coming out of that. And I, I do hope we continue it, because I, I'm not sure how I would vote today. I would really like to have some more discussion between the two. I doubt that the legislation is going to be decided between now and Tuesday, this being Friday, and they're not in session until at least Tuesday anyway. So I, I just don't think there's any harm, and I'd like to see some interaction between the two departments.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
Right, I have no problem with it continues. I think you should be mindful of the fact, this is the second piece of legislation that I remember, maybe even more, that Mr. Alarcon has introduced, which would preempt local government and take away the authority for us to make a decision. Just on that alone, without even discussing the merits of the bill, we should oppose it. This is, this kind of special interests bill does not serve our best interests. Current law provides that we on the local level have a local option to make that decision whether or not we should decide to classify library security officers as peace officers. We can do that if we choose to do so. And Ms. Goldberg saying, let's go to the various committees, I have no problem with that. But to have legislation introduced targeting the city of Los Angeles for that purpose, preempting local government and taking away the authority for us to do so, is outright wrong. We have never let legislation go through unopposed in that, in that manner. So even on that alone, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the answer is obvious, so no vote. I vote under, under motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Madam Clerk, what do we have before us?
You have a continuance by Councilmember Goldberg, seconded by Ms. Akowski, to Tuesday of Item 18, and the interim that the two concerned departments meet and see if they can resolve the issue before Tuesday, or report back at that time their concerns.
Okay, is there any objection to that motion?
No.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. The item is continued until Tuesday, with the recommendations about the confer among the departments occurring. Next item.
Item 29 was on the desk, that's to be received and filed.
Okay, without objection, item number 29 is to be received and filed.
It's named committee.
Okay, item number 29 is received and filed. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, you have public comments on today's agenda, however, because of the urgency on one of the closed-session items, it's recommended by the city attorney that council recessed to closed session at this time.
Okay.
On items 30, 31, and you have a special item on special meeting, also closed session.
Okay, well, let's send item 19 forthwith, at the request of Councilman Ridley Thomas. We will have public comment in regards to the regular meeting right after the closed session. And so what I would like to do is to have the clerk call the role of the special council meeting in order that we can go into closed session on the closed-session items on both agendas.
And while doing that, Mr. President, we wish to duly acknowledge the presence, once again, of one said, "Dion Titus."
There we are. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the role on the special meeting?
The role for the special meeting, Bernson, Chick, Furor, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Sikowsky, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Savornish, Wax, Walters, Farraro, 10 councilmembers present, and a quorum for the special meeting, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are going to be going into executive session to consider closed-session Item Number One, as well as considering the regular agenda items, Number 30 and 31. So all those present in the audience who do not have a concern with Special One, excuse me, Special Agenda Item One, or Items 30 and 31, would you please excuse yourselves? If you would like to speak on public comment, we will do that right after we finish with the closed-session items. Sergeants, would you please clear the chambers? Okay, we are back in open session. Madam Clerk, we have four items to which we need to dispense with.
Mr. President, in the interest of time, you should take maybe one vote on all of these items that have motions prepared and recommended by Budget and Finance. That'd be 30A, 30B, 31, and Item One from your special agenda today. All four motions are on the desk.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I see no one wishes to speak. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on those items and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved forthwith. Next item, Madam Clerk.
This is a time for comments from the public and non-agenda items.
Very good. We do have one speaker, Ernest Thierstein. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. What I have is a complaint to make about the inspection of the LA Housing Department. This pertains to the systematic code enforcement program. When I first heard about this, I was under the impression it was only supposed to be for apartment houses. And then I got a notice a few months ago for the house I live in. My house is a single-family house. It's on the same lot as a four-unit apartment house. So this puts me under rent control. Now, Housing says I'm subject to this systematic code enforcement program because I'm under rent control. But I called Mr. Furor's office, and because I understand that he's the one who prepared this law, and his people said that it was not supposed to be for apartments, for houses, it's supposed to be for apartments only. So I don't know how, I don't know how the Housing Department can put my house under that law if it's not in the law. But anyway, they came over to inspect because I did have a couple things that the landlord had to get past. That was a new water heater and new tile in the bathroom. And so when the inspector came in, he couldn't find any problems with what I was doing.
Mr. Thierstein?
Yes.
What we can do is that we can refer you either to the council member of your district, but the chair of the committee, Mr. Pacheco is here, who's the chair of the Housing Committee, and he and his staff would be happy to help you, or the council member of your district.
Okay, yes, he's my councilman.
Then that would solve the problem, sir.
Okay.
Very good, sir. Thank you very much for being here in the council. I know Mr. Pacheco and his staff will see to you having your issue resolved.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I see no other calls for public comment. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Motion for posting a referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
Very good. Do we have any adjourning motions? Yes, we do. Would the council and the audience please rise for adjourning motions? Prior to going into adjourning motions, we do have some excuses on the desk, and then we will do the adjourning motions.
Councilmember Galanter has requests to be excused Wednesday, June the 7th, meets council policy.
Without objection, so ordered.
And Councilmember Ridley Thomas has requests to be excused, City Business, Friday, June the 9th. The motion is required.
Mr. Wax moves. Councilwoman Ms. Sikowsky seconds. Without objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go into adjourning motions. Mr. Bernson.
Yes, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Eileen Janis. Eileen was the wife of Chuck Janis, Charles Janis, who were longtime early settlers in the Chatsworth area, very active in community affairs for many, many years, and she passed away just recently on May 17th. I'd ask that we adjourn in her memory. Thank you. She's survived by three children.
Thank you, Mr. Bernson. Mrs. Chick?
Yes, colleagues, I think many of you will remember that not very long ago, I brought Mr. Francis Letterer into council to be honored, and we presented him with a proclamation for his 100th birthday. He was very sharp and with it and happy to be here and remembered several people who were his friends here. And we were very sadly informed that he passed away yesterday morning in his sleep at the age of 100. He leaves behind his wife, Marion, and you might remember, he was a film star in the 40s and 50s and 60s and founded Mission Gallery, a very thriving art facility in the West San Fernando Valley.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bernson.
If I may, I'd like to be a co-presenter on that as a longtime businessperson in the West San Fernando Valley before this dubious career. I had many opportunities to be involved with Mr. Letterer and his family, and he is truly a, one of the landmarks of our San Fernando Valley.
All members.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, this is a request being made by Mr. Willis Edwards, in memory of, that we adjourn in memory of Mr. Emmanuel Thomas. He was a chef, Emmanuel Thomas, actor-turned-caterer. His family resides in the 10th District. He opened the famous elegant restaurant name after Josephine Baker some time ago. He catered for the finest, including President Clinton and President Gore, I mean, President Clinton and Vice President Gore, Secretary of Labor Alexis Herman, of course, Congresswoman Maxine Waters, Governor Gray Davis, and the list goes on. He leaves his loving family and a host of devoted friends and a long list of satisfied customers. So he'll be missed for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Councilwoman Ms. Sikowsky.
Members of the council, for those who've been around this building for a long time, you will remember the name Claude Hilker. Claude was the retired, is the retired senior counsel from the city attorney's office. He passed away yesterday. For many years, he was the legal pillar in the office of the city attorney, was widely recognized and respected as an expert in municipal law, particularly in the areas of land use, elections, and legislation. He was the managing assistant of the Land Use and Elections Division, the chief of the civil branch, and a senior counsel to the city attorney. He served Roger Aronberg, Ira Reiner, Bert Pines, and James K. Hahn. And I think some of the members know that I have a real enjoyment and love of land use, the intricacies, the details of it. And whatever I learned and the discipline I learned about it, I learned from Claude Hilker. He was an incredible mentor, and I know that all the members in the city attorney's office who had any ability to work with him, respect that. He was also the counsel to the attorney and came down, was incredibly judicious, incredibly correct, incredibly respected and intelligent. He attended UCLA as an undergraduate and received a law degree from USC, so had that balance as well. He retired from the city attorney's office in 1990 and enjoyed an active retirement until his recent illness. He is survived by his wife of over 40 years, Mary Lou, three daughters, Allison Halderman, Amy Lou Hilker, and Andrea Hilker Davis, grandchildren Ian, Alyssa, Claudia, and Alex, and a brother, Walter Hilker, as well as two sons-in-laws. And instead of flowers, his family requests donations be made to the Juvenile Diabetes Foundation.
All members.
All members. Mr. Wax?
Yes, I'd like to add on Claude Hilker. He's someone who really, he could have made so much more money in private practice, and he was really devoted to the city and to his, to the job that he held. He was, I think, a model employee, and we were very lucky to have had him. He was the city attorney when I first came here in the early 70s yet, and he's just a remarkable guy. I don't have the information here. I just noticed it in the paper, and I know Mr. Farraro would want to be making a motion, so I'll make it on his behalf and mine. Steve Bilheimer, many of you remember him. He passed away at the age of 96. He'd been the head of Silverwoods and a longtime civic activist in so many activities, and he passed just recently, and I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
Also, colleagues, I would like to adjourn in memory of Peter J. Ansich, who passed away on May 23rd, was born in Gig Harbor, Washington, on March 14th, 1921, was a 42-year resident of San Pedro and a commercial fisherman for over 60 years. He is survived by his wife, Marie, one son, three daughters, and five grandchildren. And also, colleagues, I think it would be appropriate, with Memorial Day being Monday, that we keep in our minds and close our hearts all of those service personnel in the armed forces who gave their lives in defense of the country. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Seeing no further business, the council is adjourned. Have a very nice weekend.
Your city, your channel.